Okay, we will call today's meeting to order for December the 13th. Could I please have, are there any additions or additions to the agenda? CEO Becker?
Yes, Mayor Berkeley, addition to the agenda, please, there'd be a new 13, 13.1 to be in camera. Flight as per section 24. One, as per the legislation, legal matter advice from officials.
Okay, thank you. Can I please have someone make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'd so move, Mayor Berkeley.
Kate, thank you, Councilor Harrison, all in favor? Thank you. And we'll just review the minutes of the regular meeting of November 22nd. Everything's in order. Please have someone make motion to adopt those minutes.
Mayor Berkeley, I'll move the minutes, but I do have a question. Item six point one. The motions, should they refer to second and third readings, or is that just assumed? Like, should we actually note that they're second and third readings?
Hi, Mayor Berkeley, if it's referencing a bylaw would require bylaw reference. I'd have to go back to the actual RFD. If you can hang on to this, do not approve your minutes at this moment. We'll certainly go back. In the meeting, we'll come back to advise you, oh, I might see in the RF request for decision to apply that question, Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will bypass 3.1 then, and we'll go to 3.2. Could I please have someone make motion to approve the agenda and priorities committee meeting for December the 6th?
Mayor Berkeley also move.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham, all in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, so I will ask, we have a delegation here today, Iris Reimer, who's doing a follow-up to previous delegation visits. So we'll ask, this is Reimer to come up to the delegation desk. And I'm will have you do your presentation. As you know, you have a 10-minute window, so. To carry on, thank you.
Thanks. Um, good afternoon. I, I just want to say before I start that I have had a number of people who have helped me put together this presentation, and I just want to publicly thank them. They know who they are. Also, I have worked very hard on this, and I just want to let you know that I am second iceberg, like you're seeing just a bit of the top, the tip of an iceberg. There are many people that I feel like I'm representing. Also, Mayor Berkeley, I've worked very hard to keep this at 10 minutes. If I stumble on something, please understand, I've timed myself a number of times. It's at 10. It might go to 11 if I'm curing Cara on this. I had originally, anyways, I'm just letting you know, I've done everything I can to make sure that this is a 10. I know that it's a long meeting today, so. Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Council, and fellow citizens. Thank you for allowing me to come before you again today. It's an honor for me to be here. We want our town to be welcoming and inclusive, and you're allowing me to present again does make me feel like I can be part of the community and my voice can be heard. I request requested to present because recently I came across some valuable information, and I wanted to share it with you. But first, I wanted to follow up on the two presentations made previously, October 12th and November 15th. In both presentations, we brought up some of our concerns with the R E P vaccine passport program. The administration of our town was implementing in the Innisville's public recreation facilities. These concerns include the safety, health, and well-being of all town and county citizens, and accessibility to the public facilities for which they pay taxes. The council's discussion regarding the six recreational men's hockey teams, wanting compliance without seeking truth, and failure to engage in dialogue, understanding, and collaboration. Discrimination and division rather than healing and unity in our community. A request was made for an inclusive roundtable discussion where information, questions, and concerns with the R E P would be shared. The hope is that we could be creative and come up with ingenious solutions, and other towns could follow our lead. We had two main questions. Will you impose the R E P in town and how much money? You're scaring me. Okay. I'm sorry, we had two main questions. Will you impose the R E P in town? And how much money has a province promised to municipalities for its implementation? The first document is my letter. I believe that's that. Knowing it had been an emotional exchange, two days after our presentation, I sent a letter to all council members clarifying our concerns. In it were summarized statements from our three presenters. Additionally, I included information from the 300 signed, 300 signed papers we had brought from concerned town and county citizens stating they are not in favor of the discriminatory vaccine passport program in any of Innisville's facilities, and therefore a refund was requested for the taxes they paid toward the public facilities they no longer had access to. Document two, Todd's letter. 10 days later, I received a letter via email from C A O Todd Becker answering my two main questions. There is a failure to address the following: the roundtable exchange of ideas, the contradictions surrounding the men's hockey teams, the topic of discrimination and human rights violations in our town. It was, however, strongly recommended to contact representatives of the provincial government and to get clarification of the restrictions and vaccination programs currently in effect. As of this date, copies of this presentation and documents have been sent to our M L A, our Minister of Health, our Minister of Justice, and our Premier. This takes me to today. I'm so excited to introduce to you a man who was at one time very involved in both provincial and federal governments. Recently, I had the opportunity to meet him through Zoom call and then interacted through emails. I've learned a lot from him and would like to share a bit with you. The Honorable Brian Peckford, former Premier of Newfoundland and the last surviving architect of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. In 1982, he was involved in the constitutional patriation process, the political procedure that led to full Canadian sovereignty. This culminated in the Constitution Act of 1982, signed by Queen Elizabeth. The Charter of Rights and Freedoms became an integral and permanent part of the Constitution, which guaranteed the rights and freedoms for all Canadian citizens, and it was incorporated into the supreme law of the land to ensure future governments could not render it obsolete. Document three, the Constitution, please. Okay, I'll just read it. Section 52.1 of our Constitution states, "The Constitution of Canada is a supreme law." It looks like this. I don't know if you have it. I'll hold it up. Section 52.1 of our Constitution states, "The Constitution of Canada is the supreme law of Canada, and any law that is inconsistent with the provisions of the Constitution is to the extent of the inconsistency of no force or effect." So therefore, every law, federal, provincial, or municipal is subservient to the Constitution of Canada." There it is. Thank you. Now for the Charter, do you have this page? That one was given. There were 11 pages, you said. It's the Canadian Constitution, the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. It's the now to our Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which, as I said, is part of the Constitution. If you can read that, that's why I provided the other one, but I think you can read that. Now to our Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which, as I said, is part of the Constitution. I will not read the whole Charter. Instead, I will read four sections. Mr. Peckford calls these the gems of the Charter. Section two, everyone has the following fundamental freedoms: the freedom of conscience, freedom of religion, thought, belief, opinion, and expression, as well as freedom of association and freedom of assembly. Section six, mobility rights. Every citizen of Canada has the right to travel anywhere in Canada and leave Canada, and the right to pursue a livelihood anywhere in Canada. Section seven, everyone has the right to life, liberty, and the security of the person. Section 15, every individual is equal before the law, has equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimination. I would like to point out that all of these individual rights have been stripped from individuals by the various government COVID measures. As an example, I recently learned of an Innisville mother who was unable to enter our public pool to watch her children swim. This is not equality, security, or liberty. Some might argue that section one of the Charter allows these draconian or overreaching measures. Section one says, "The Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms guarantees the rights and freedoms set out in its subject only to such reasonable limits prescribed by law." I would like to share, it's a three-minute soundbite from Brian Peckford on this.
In the country, and the governments are part of this, and this is something that everybody should really strive to understand. Section one of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms says that governments have the right to override what I just said in section two, six, seven, 15. If they can demonstrably justify taking those actions to override the Constitution, they have to demonstrably justify in law with reasonable limits that is consistent with a free and democratic society. My argument, when I got involved in this and saw what was going on, and I couldn't stay quiet any longer, is that not one government, federal, provincial, or territorial, has demonstrably justified what they are doing. There's not one cost benefit analysis, there's not one study, there's not one report, but any government would say, here is our argument justifying the new, the measures we're bringing in to fight this so-called pandemic. None, zero, there isn't any. And therefore, they are, they have not met the test of section one to override sections two, six, seven, and 15. Any reasonable person knows a language and knows the words justify and demonstrably knows that these governments not only have to justify what they have done, they have to demonstrably, in other words, very, very clearly and very detailed to justify this. Has any government had a select committee of their legislature or of the House of Commons go study this, bring in experts from all over the world, and hear both sides of the story? And then let that select committee report back? This would be democracy. This would be a parliamentary democracy, and that's what we do. Or had a, had a full hearing in the, in or even in the Parliament and brought that expert right into Parliament or right into the legislature. You're allowed to do that. You're allowed to do that. And so the governments have not taken the time to honor what is in section one even, which they have the right to override. But obviously, when you read this, you know right away that there's going to have to be some pretty powerful stuff come forward in order to justify what they're doing, to demonstrably justify what they're doing, and they haven't done. And this is very sad.
In an email, he further stays, says, "If section one applies, I firmly believe on recollection that at the time we discussed it, section one was meant for war and insurrection or other dire circumstances, certainly not a medical event where 99% of the people recover." So it does not even apply to the circumstance. For argument's sake, if it did apply, no government has done one study, one report, or a cost benefit analysis demonstrably justifying their measures, let alone any new law or reasonable limits or measures consistent with a free and democratic society. It was mentioned in the dialogue after our second presentation that your hands were tied. You couldn't do anything unless you break the law. And we should therefore take it up at a provincial level and contact our M L A. But there is another way, and a better way, and I believe this council can complete this task. In March of 2020, I witnessed both Mayor Berkeley and Counselor Heistad, who I see as absent today. But I witnessed both of you, your passion and your conviction as you both fought for our town's physicians and directed our town council to take the physician's concerns to the provincial government. I welcome you as our representatives to be our voice and take up the baton and fight for all of our town. Sorry, to fight for all of our town and our county citizens' rights. There's almost 8,000 people in Innisville, and the county of Red Deer is almost 19,000. We need your support and help to take our concerns to the provincial level. Specifically, I ask council to make a motion to draft and send a letter asking the governments of Alberta to cancel the restriction exemption program because it is unlawful, it's unconstitutional. And in order to implement implement this program, the citizens' charter protected rights and freedoms are being violated and stripped from them. We are not at war, nor is there an insurrection. They have not demonstrably justified their pandemic COVID measures. This is a reasonable request, as what they have asked you to do is in fact breaking the law, the Constitution of Canada, the supreme law of Canada. I want to welcome you to represent us, bring unity, bring healing, and perhaps you will lead the charge, and other municipalities will join you as you represent and lobby for your citizens and their rights and freedoms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any questions? I do not have any questions. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. What I'll do is I'm just going to call for a five-minute recess. I'll make a motion that we take a five-minute recess, please, and I'm sure that people probably don't want to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. But we'll just take a five-minute break.
Can I ask a quick question?
We'll reconvene.
Is there still an open microphone that I saw on the agenda today? Because I think there are people here who would like to speak as well, so it's not just my voice that you're hearing.
Well, the open microphone isn't now. It's at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so it's at the end, so there is an open microphone today?
Yep, yep, point number 11, there's an open microphone.
Point number 11.
And just so you know, you meant, you referenced Counselor Heistad, so he's away today. I was going to mention, well, we wish him a speedy recovery. Of course, he had his surgeries canceled twice because of hospitalizations due to COVID. And finally, today, he was able to access his surgery first thing this morning, so we wished him a very speedy recovery. And just with respect to some of the other things you've said, Mrs. Reimer.
Oh, sorry, we are still talking?
We've had some feedback from a legal representative, and I'll maybe let CEO Becker expand on it, but section 92 of the Constitution actually tells us what kind of authority municipalities municipalities have, and we don't have any. So the only power we have is really granted through the Municipal Government Act, and other than that, we don't have any. So if you want to expand on that, CEO Becker, and.
From years in the business, Mayor Berkeley, municipalities, municipalities in Alberta, but I think right across the country, have been advocating to the provincial and federal governments for municipal autonomy. What this means, the province has exclusive control over communities and are not constitutionally recognized. The province of Alberta has, although we're references the local governments, we're not identified in the Constitution. We're under the auspices or of the provincial government, we're called a creature of the of the province, most is a common term. Section 92 states that the provinces can also make laws respecting all matters of merely local or private nature in the province. As council knows, through your training as new council, the the requirements we can apply within our current jurisdiction is to the municipal government act. That gives you a right to apply bylaws. But the mandate of the province is that of the province, and we really have zero jurisdiction as they apply that through the provincial government, so.
So I'm trying to understand. So what you're saying basically is that you cannot represent your citizens of Innisville and the people who have voted you in, or the the town who, the county that uses the facilities, you your hands are strapped that you cannot represent us at the government level? Because I understand that is what you did for the physicians of the town, Mayor Berkeley. And so you're saying you can't represent your citizens.
Is that there's ministerial orders in place on how the facilities are run, and we are not going to not abide by those. And I think we've been through this many times before, and if you want to have a constitutional discussion, I would take it up with your legal representatives, and they can discuss with our legal representatives, because I don't have the ability. I'm not a constitutional lawyer, and I'm certainly not a health expert, so.
But you've mentioned the municipal government affairs, and I've got, it says, the main players. The mayor is our community representative. So you're a member of council, and you've got the same responsibilities as other councillors, and the councillors, you represent all members of your community. And so what I'm saying is you represent us. And what I think I've shown in my talk before you today is our Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Every law, federal, provincial, and municipal is subservient to the Constitution of Canada in which our Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms fall under. And that, I mean, that got me excited. I would hope that you, at a municipal level where you're in government, that that would excite you, rather than it seems like you just, you don't care about our rights and freedoms. And I'm trying to give you a way forward to bring unity and to stand up for your people. And you're, you're basically, it feels like you're being dismissive and saying, just take it up with someone else. And I feel like your level of government, the municipalities are represent representing your constituents. Like I said, 8,000 Innisville citizens, 19,000 Red Deer County, who are also have use of the facilities. But you represent them, and you can speak to the provincial government like you did for the doctors. I think we have 10 or 15 doctors in our town, and you are willing to fight for them, and I'm asking you to fight for the rest of the town, for our charter rights and freedoms.
Kate, well, thank you for your presentation. Does anybody have any more comments, Councilor Bates?
Yeah, just one. So we were fortunate enough last week to all hear from a municipal lawyer. And he specifically stated, "We are subordinate to the province and federal government. We do not have that jurisdiction." And anything I've been able to do all the way back to the election and and comment on the Zoom that we had was that I didn't have the expertise, and I certainly don't. I'm a mechanical engineer. I wouldn't begin to try and design you a double-duty bridge, because that's a civil engineer. I don't have any medical or this level of legal expertise. And we don't have the jurisdiction, which was confirmed to us last week again.
But Mr.
So I don't have that.
Counselor Bates, you said, "I was asking you to break the law" last time. You said, "I was asking you to break the law." By not, you did. I saw it again. You asked me, you said, "I'm asking you guys to break the law." And what I've proven in my talk is that you guys are actually breaking the law by not standing up for our, and by, like, for our rights and freedoms.
I guess what I'm trying to tell you, we are subordinate to those two levels of government. And we are not breaking the law by because we don't have, we don't have the jurisdiction to go back to the province or to the feds and say we have this constitutional privilege. We don't have it. That was just told to us last week. And my question is, is, is this how you want your, your town to spend its money through lawyers to try to advance
I never said lawyers.
A specific agenda through to the entire province and the country of Canada from Innisville? Because if that is the case, and I kind of quit, I saw in your letter that you said I was going to triple your taxes. I made a comment that we could triple your taxes, and we wouldn't have enough money to start to get to be credible if we had the jurisdiction, and we don't.
I'm not asking you to hire lawyers. I'm asking you to represent your people, even just write a letter. My ask, I'll repeat it. Specifically, I asked council to make a motion to draft a letter. That's what you did for the physicians. I'm asking you to draft and send a letter asking the government of Alberta to cancel the restriction exemption program because it is unlawful, it's unconstitutional. And in order for your town to implement this, or your, sorry, the administration to implement this program, the citizens' charter protected rights and freedoms are being violated and stripped from them. We're not at war, nor is there an insurrection.
I just tried to say, I don't think we have the jurisdiction to go to our upper levels of government and tell them that they have have committed an unlawful event. And I certainly don't have the expertise. I don't see any legal L L whatever goes behind names here. I don't see it. And so unless we start to employ lawyers at your expense.
I'm not asking you to employ lawyers. I'm asking you to do the same thing you did for doctors. You did it for the doctors. I'm asking you stand up and speak for us.
I believe we advocated to the health people minister that they look at the combined healthcare system that we have in Innisville, that it is an excellent system with our primary care network and our nurses and hospital and doctors. And please keep that in mind as they're working with the doctors that we want to keep it intact. I can't remember what we said, but that was about like that. We sure as heck didn't go up to them and say what you're doing is illegal to the doctors and change that.
I'm just concerned, because I feel like there's no feeling here. Is there a feeling here at all? For the mother who can't watch her, her children swim, so you're going to allow whoever into the pool to watch her children swim, but a mother is not allowed to go into our swimming pool to watch her own children swim?
Well, I believe, CEO Becker, that people can go in and watch their kids swim or watch their kids play hockey. I mean, I
No, that's not true.
We have a hybrid. Anyway, I'm, I've made a motion. I'm going to take, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I'm going to make a motion that will take a five-minute recess. All in favor? Kate, thank you, and thank you for the delegation today, and we will then move on to the rest of the meeting when we come back. Thank you. And we will then move on to the rest of the meeting when we come back. Thank you. CEO Becker, do we need a motion to go back and, yeah, have a motion, please, to go back into the regular meeting? Okay, thank you, Councillor Wing. All in favor? Thank you. So we'll move on to 5.1, which is the CEO report from CEO Becker.
If you don't mind, Mayor Barkley, we'll go back to the minutes. I think it's November 15th. Just for clarification. November 20.
November 22.
Thank you. So just going back into the previous agenda, just looking what transpired to develop the minutes and the resolutions. So back in September, council gave second and third readings to bylaw 1668, 2021 to close an undeveloped road right away. Within the plan, I won't reference the number at this point. Administration prepared documentation after this approval, which would generate the report of November 22nd. The first resolution references documents as for a land purchase agreement between the town and the adjacent landowner. Which as a closed right away would be consolidated with the adjacent parcel as part of the conditions of transfer. The second document, as per the second resolution, is a land acquisition agreement between the town and the adjacent landowner for the future right away to obtain the land. So what I'm saying is there was not, if the bylaws were already approved back in September, this is just finalizing the deal through, through, through the proper agreements. So I believe the motions are read properly.
Did you want to continue on with your report and then we can deal with that when you're finished or?
I'd recommend just deal with the minutes and if you're ready for approval.
Okay, then I will have somebody please approve the, the minutes of November 22nd.
I'll approve the minutes, Mayor Barkley.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Maseris. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, on to the CEO report to Mayor Barkley, just there for your reference. As you can see, the administration or parts of administration took a tour of the water treatment plant. I know council reported on this item previously. Council members, administration of Canada, elected officials education program last week, really geared towards you as elected officials. It's also a good learnings for administration in support of you, council. That was held in Three Hills last Thursday and Friday. Private, primary focus area of the CEO within this reporting period includes the preparation and deliberation of the 2022 budget deliberations. My health and safety audit, which I'm happy to say we, there was a pass, but there will be a report coming back to council more detail likely early in the new year. But we did receive our certificate of recognition through our external audit process. A few committee meetings I attended for your review and then of course, working with you on the performance evaluation. One thing I want, council, if you wouldn't mind considering, just thinking ahead of meetings over the Christmas break, just through vacations, we're not expecting much to deliver on December 20th. However, based on your deliberation of the budget today, you may want to use the 20th as a, as an opportunity for future additional discussing, discussion. But at this point, recommending council to consider cancelling the regular council meeting of December 27th. With that, council, that's my report. It's happy to take any questions.
Kate, does anyone have any questions? And then we'll ask for a motion to accept for information. I think congratulations on achieving course. That's good news. And could I please have someone make a motion to accept the CEO report as information?
Mayor Barkley, move the recommendation, sorry, the recommended motion that council approves the chief administrative officers red line report dated December 13th, 2021 as information.
All right. Thank you, Councillor Dunham. All in favor?
And then would council consider, formally council, December 27th regular council meeting?
Yeah. Does someone want to make a motion that we cancel December 27th council meetings?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley, in spite of the fact it's my birthday.
Wow. We could come for your birthday, I guess. All right. Thank you very much. All in favor? Okay, moving on to 5.2, the ECC verbal update from CEO Becker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a few items. Administration had town protective services on location at the arenas recently to assist in patron compliance, which it seemed to work out quite well. Fire departments will be rolling out some of their fleet on Christmas Eve. As part of a mini Santa Claus parade with, of course, with the participation of Santa Claus or open. Santa will show up for that evening, but you'll see and hear some of the sirens and horns that evening. So don't consider it as emergency. It's more of a goodwill to, to the community in a, in a mini parade. Employee mental health remains a priority and there is our staff members that are taking mental health interstate to, to be of support of each other at this given time. So that's my report, Mayor and Council.
Right. Sounds great. Could I please have someone make a motion that we accept the ECC report as information?
Mayor Barkley, I would make the motion, please, to accept the ECC report for information.
Kate, thank you, Councillor Wing. Any questions, discussions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. And next we have the CEO who will report on the council action control. If there's any updates.
It's there for your information, council. If there's any questions on the status of some of these actions, this is a good time for you to, to query administration.
CEO, has there been any update on the arena condenser? As far as delivery date, I think was a few weeks away.
And remember, actually, the condenser is fixed, they patched it, I think, a week ago. And then the new one is on order, is expected to come more towards the spring.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no questions. Could I please have someone make a motion to accept action control as information?
I saw a move, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councillor Harrison. All in favor? Thank you. And next we have 5.4, so a request for a decision on media and communications training delivered by CEO Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Over the conversation during the budgets, council talked about the opportunity for training for media and communications. It is important that council and the organization develop a professional relationship with, with media. Administration has developed a training scope for consideration, which is a part of this report. Intent based on council's direction is to issue out an RFP to a selected vendor list as per the procurement policy. So this is not a, a full board sending out RFP to, to market. It is to select three, three vendors and provide the scope as attached to the selected vendors. Administration is requesting council to review and confirm the training scope. That is if you wish to proceed with this training in the new year. And then direct administration to issue the RFP for media and communications training. So just if you wouldn't mind, council, just take a peek at the scope and this train, does it fit your expectations?
Before I ask for motion, does anyone have any questions about this initiative? I think it's a wonderful idea and will be long overdue. Councillor Bates?
I'll move that we proceed with the recommended action of, oops, skipped ahead of, of proceeding with engaging with media training.
Okay, any questions, discussions? All in favor? Thank you, Carrie. Okay, and next we're on to 6.1, Director Kennedy, a request for decision on the Anthony Handy campground lease.
Thanks, Mayor Barkley. Yeah, so in front of you is just a request for decision to renew the lease agreement with the Lions Club. A little background, the Lions Club in the town have been having a very strong working relationship. And the Lions Club has managed the campground for the past 10 years. In 2021, they had 3,293 trailer site rentals and 49 tent site rentals between May and September. This is slightly down from previous years, but still had a, had a fairly decent year. The Lion Club, Lions Club would like to increase the site rental fees for 2022. This being tenting sites from $15 to $20 per night. 15 amp hour sites from $27 to $30 per night. And 30 amp hour sites from $32 to $37 per night. We have reviewed the lease with the club and have agreed on some minor revisions. So periods of operation have been revised to include the onsite accommodation for one caretaker, manager, and now more than five additional self-contained camping units during the off season. They have come forward and said that that won't happen this year, but it is an option for them in future years. Permitted to hold seasonal events throughout the year. The previous lease stated that the campground was to be closed. So we have made it so that it's available for them to hold off season events. Any sales of potable water to be given back directly to the town as sale of potable water is not allowed by the campground. Lease, the leasing fee to be increased from 15,000 a year to 17 per year. The yearly sum is to be reviewed between the Lion, Lions Club and the town during the annual reporting in November of each year. So we are looking for council to, for two recommended motions. One is to approve the lease for a five-year term, starting January 1st to December 1st, 2026. And the second is for council to approve the increase in rental site fees.
Okay, thank you, Director Kennedy. Can I please have someone make the first motion?
I'll make the first motion. Mayor Barkley, do you want me to read it out?
Please.
I move that council approves the lease renewal with Alliance Club for a five-year term, starting January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2026, for the annual lease fee of $17,000 a year. And with an option to extend for an additional five-year term.
Thank you, Councillor Maseris. Any questions about that? Councillor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Yeah, I have two, one around the potable water. How's that regulated? And the second question's around the power, the 15 and the 30 amp. Who pays the utilities at the, at the recreation area?
So the club, the Lions Club pays the, pays the rental fees for the power, I believe? No, no, that comes out of 15,000. That's right. Sorry. That comes out of the $17,000 lease. So we pay those. So what we did is we did a review of the last three years. And that's why the increase came into effect. And then in regards to the potable water, it was, they, they keep track. It's per unit. What they try and do is deter that though. They don't try and sell any water, especially now that we have a site available for our lease starting next year. But yeah, they were finding that it was on occasion coming in that people were wanting to buy water from it. So last year, they did have a record last year of only five units wanting that service. So, so they are trying to deter that and not have.
Okay, so the potable water could be, I go in, I spend my two days, I'm going to a different campground. I want to fill up my holding tank. That's what they keep track of. Okay, thank you, Director Kennedy.
Okay, any further questions?
Just the supplementary, maybe we can let the Lions Club know that we got a water fill station down here that, that's where they can go to get their water. That's potable. So just, just to comment. Thank you.
Do we have any overwinter residents in there now, Director Kennedy?
They don't this year. So last year they did have the five sites, but this year they don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. They are all in favor of that. Okay, thank you. And then I would have someone please make a motion on the, the second motion.
I propose that council approves the site rental fees for 2022 to be $20 per night for tent sites, $30 a night for 15 amp sites and $37 a night for 30 amp sites.
Thank you, Councillor Harrison. Any questions, Councillor Wing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barkley, probably through to Director Kennedy. The tenting increase from $15 to $20 a night seems really high to me for an unserviced site. And so I'm just a little bit curious, have they based this on a market rate? Are they looking at increased costs at the campground that they're trying to offset by this? And how many tenting sites do we have here? Do you know?
Unfortunately, I don't know how many sites they have. They did do, they have told me they did a market analysis on it for tenting sites and it is obviously to, to try and offset some of their, their costs as well, so.
Okay, anything further? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Right, next we will go on to 7.1, request for decision on the 2022 operating capital budgets presented by Director Vickers.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Okay. So this is the 2022 operating and capital budget. So first I just thought we'd do a little comic and sometimes this is what it feels like, right? So, okay, asking, I need your budget requirements for next year. Stephen says, put me down for as much as I can get. So he says, let's start with a trillion dollars and see how far that goes. Okay, so council held 2022 budget deliberations on November 24th, 25th and 26th in council chambers. These sessions were advertised to the public and were, was available to attend in person and by live feed on all three days. So just prior to our budget deliberations, we did have some strategic planning. I know our final strategic planning is happening early next year, I believe in February. But some of the key things that council had pulled out as priorities was asset management, housing, economic development and community, community safety initiative. And we tried to keep those things in mind as we went through and did all our budget planning as well as the budget deliberations with council. And we tried to keep those things in mind as we went through and did all our budget planning as well as the budget deliberations with council. So the current budget that is being presented today has a operating revenues of 22,864,216. And then operating expenses of 22,785,374. That is giving us a contingency of 78,842. Our current capital budget is 7,168,000 and our projected reserve balance is 12,203,000. So I put this slide in just to say what our current staffing levels are. So currently we have 62 full-time staff, 20 part-time staff, 26 firefighters, and we do have a few vacant positions. We have two full-time vacant positions and one part-time vacancy. In this budget, we didn't ask for any new positions, but we are reallocating some of those vacancies. So we're going to take one vacant custodian and transfer it to a facility worker, which is a part-time position. And we're reallocating one full-time position from the pool into communications. So there's no net increase to the budget. We're just doing some reallocations. And in this budget, we did put in 13 summer staff. So it's broken out protective services is receiving one. Operations as a whole is receiving 11 and community services is receiving one allocated for the skate park. So continuing with staff and salaries, this this budget does incorporate a 2% COLA increase for all staff. We did do COLA comparison, sorry, to neighboring municipalities. And most of them are anywhere from 1.75 increase up to 2.33. So 2% is kind of right, right in the middle and CPI currently is 4.7%. That was October 2020 to October 2021. As well in the budget, upon a successful completion of a performance review, a level of merit may also be allocated to each staff member. So taxes, so the 2022 estimated tax assessments for the town have projected a minimal residential increase of 0.39% and a commercial increase of 0.23%. This would have been an increase of $26,000 for our tax revenue, but we are incorporating a 2% tax increase into the 2022 budget. This is generating an additional 156,492 for us. And I just added that a property with a tax assessment of $300,000 will see a tax increase of approximately $2.48 per month. So should the overall final assessments be different, what is projected in the 2022 budget? The tax rate increase may be adjusted, so the net effect on property owners is the same as outlined in the 2022 budget. The provincial government is expected to pass its budget in the spring, at which time the education requisitions are known. We also receive our our final assessment roll in February. So after that, council will set the mail rates based on our actual assessments received by our assessors. And the combined tax and assessment notices will be mailed out by the end of April 2022. So I did just put this slide back in again. This just outlines the historical mill rates and just shows that since 2015, we've only had a 1.5 increase for residential and a 1% for non-residential. And that happened in 2019. In all other years, there was zero tax increases. So we'll move on to franchise fees. So the Fortis franchise fee is budgeted to increase by 2% up to 17%. This will generate an additional $193,000 in revenue. And the average electricity bill will see an increase of approximately $1.92 per month based on that increase. And we are leaving the Atco franchise fee the same at 27%. So utilities, so the water rate for 2022 is going to increase from $2.60 to $2.71. So this is an 11 cent increase and this is to incorporate the 11 cent increase that we received from the commission. And then the wastewater rate is increasing from $3.45 to $3.60. So this is a 15 cent increase. We received an eight cent increase from the commission and then we also did a slight increase to help work towards user-based balancing. So a monthly utility bill will see an increase of $2.60. That's based on 10 cubes of water consumption. And all flat rate charges for water wastewater storming garbage have remained the same for 2022. I just wanted to highlight a few of the increases that we are seeing in this budget. The big one being the increased RCMP operational costs. That is 190,000 direct on our budget this year. Helly pad operational expenses. 58,383 and increased handy van expenses, $32,840. And then also a community safety initiative of $20,000. So I did outline some 2022 operating projects that are in our operating budget. So some of the things are media training, the community safety initiative. We have an infrastructure study update, some sidewalk assessment repairs, fencing at Centennial Park, tree replacements, some tree removal at the cemetery, landscape designs. We're doing new concrete runners at the cemetery as well to open up some new sections. We have a downtown tactic study happening as well as an event stage. And I just did add in some events that are planned for 2022. So we have the market on main, the parade. The skate park event that happened last year, we'll be doing something similar like that this year. Tree lighting, hometown Christmas, the Canada Day celebration, community awards gala, family day and winter fest. So the following requisitions and or grants are also included in the 2022 budget. So the NSFL library, 148,500, Parkland Regional Library, 66,000. The historical village receives 27,000. In a spell Legion is 88,000. Under FCSS, the grants to others is 134,000. Community grants is 13,000 and the solar farm grants to others, but that is that they get $20,000. That's the money that the solar farm gives to us that we turn around and give out back to the community on their behalf. So the capital budget, the capital 2022 capital budget was reviewed during budget deliberations and the final final report list is attached. So the total capital budget is 7,168,668. And capital projects are primarily, sorry, funded primarily by provincial and federal grants and from reserves. So I just wanted to let everyone know that the MSI grant funding was decreased for years 2021 to 2023. We are only expecting to receive just over 847,000 in years 2022 and 2023. And this is approximately half of what we are used to receiving in previous years. And then in 2024, MSI will be replaced with the local government fiscal framework, which is LGFF. And at this time, the detailed breakdown of grant dollars are still unknown at this time. So I just did a little breakdown of our capital funding sources. So grants is 44% and with reserves is 54% and others 2%. And that other is donations from community organizations. And then the reserves. So I, the reserve sheet is also attached to this report. So the 2022 reserves show budgeted additions from the operating budget of 1,544,000 and a withdrawal of 4,69,000 for capital projects. And this will leave a balance of 12,203,826. So that's it for my report. I'll take any questions that you guys have. And then I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2022 operating capital budget as presented.
Thank you, Director Vickers. Maybe we'll have some discussion first if anybody has any questions. Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a couple of questions, one around the wastewater. And when are we going to be able to balance that account over is it the next couple of years or whatever? Because there was money drawn on a different account. I'll just let you explain it for maybe, I don't know if our new council members are aware of that. So and the second question is on the Legion, the 88,000. Maybe you could just explain what that 88,000 going to the Legion's all about. Thank you.
Mayor Barkley, going through to Don Harrison. So the wastewater reserve currently, all of our utility departments have to pay for themselves, right? So the utility rates that the residents pay for has to pay for that department. And currently the wastewater department is not paying for itself yet. We are drawing from the stabilization reserve to help balance out that budget. And based on the increases that we project, we won't balance out that budget. So we're not pulling from reserve until around 2026. And likely we'll even have to continue because we actually have to put money into reserves to help fund infrastructure projects in the future. So we are looking at a five-year term before we really balance that department. Is that good? Okay. Perfect. And then just with your question about the Legion, so the 88,000 is helping funding the pace bus. But that also includes the new wheelchair accessible van that is also in this budget. So should that project not go forward, then we would be able to reduce that budget down to like 57,000, I believe, right? So, okay.
Anything else, Councilor Dunham?
Mayor Barkley, over to Director Vickers. Could you perhaps just expand the, I think it was previous to us, the the replacement of the MSI with the LGFF and the reduction in amount that you're getting from that? What is, what was the progenitor to that? And a little bit more background, please.
Sure. So the MSI is a government program from the provincial government and MSI was actually scheduled to be shut down. I'm not sure the exact year, but I believe it was 2019 or 2020 and they've extended it a few years. But the extension that they gave was at an extreme lower rate, a budgeted rate of what? So everyone across the province has seen a drastic reduction in in the grant dollars that they're receiving from MSI rate. So.
Yeah, I think just add some further context that, you know, I believe there's been a lot of advocacy from Alberta municipalities to try to come up with a fairer deal so that we know further in advance what the revenues will be going forward as opposed to kind of sitting from year to year and it's it's up, it's down. It's and it's very hard to plan as you, I'm sure you saw it in budget when we really don't know what those revenues are going to be. So it was going to be tied to provincial growth and was supposed to be 100% up or down. And I know that the province came back and changed that to a 50% share in the growth aspect. So I'm not sure where things are at and I don't think we've heard too much recently about it, but.
You're right. And Mayor Barkley, we always have to wait until the government passes their budget before we find out our dollar amount. And that normally happens in the springtime after we've passed our budget, right?
And to be fair to the province too, we also got an advance basically last year because of COVID. We we got some funding that we wouldn't normally have and that was kind of an advanced payment of this year. So that's partly why this year is is so much less than it has been as well. Any other questions? Councilor Bates?
Just to comment, the contingency against that size budget is the smallest that I've seen in a long time. And I'm assuming that if we chose to actually, when we purchase something or do something, if we if we do recover something that that helps that contingency, one thing comes to mind, the the heliport operating portion, obviously is not going to start in January. So I would assume that we'll recover some of that. Or is that prorated already? That's not, is it?
No, so Mayor Barkley through to Councilor Bates, a portion of that is salaries. Like we are going to have a heliport manager that even though it may not be constructed until later in the fall, there will still be some expenses for salaries toward there. But yes, there will likely be very few calls at that location. So that may not be.
Right. Okay, yeah, like I say, it's a small contingency and 27 million.
Councilor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to Director Vickers. Just relative to the capital reserves, and I just want to just confirm an assumption or a recollection from our conversations. So currently, I mean, we talk about, we have talked about our reserves sitting at 14 million prior-ish prior to this. We've taught what we, what we didn't, what what I didn't understand until going through this process. So it was very helpful was large pieces of that capital reserves are in fact restricted. We've we've counsel, previous councils have made decisions to say we'll build reserves relative to a large number. But we talked about having developing policy as we move forward relative to what that looks like. So that's that is a body of work that will happen this year.
Absolutely. I'm a Berkeley through to Councilor Wing. Yes, so it is on my agenda. Hopefully in the first quarter of next year to get in a reserves policy and bring it bring it forward to council for your approval.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Councilor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to Director Vickers. Amortization. Can you give us just a quick rundown? I know it's a paper number, like do we actually put money away for amortization?
So Mayor Barkley through to Councilor Harrison. So we don't, we don't budget for amortization here, but you will see it when we do our audit that it is a number in our financial statement. So that's actually the depreciated amount of all of our of all of our assets, right? And it's around that 3.7, 3.8 million dollars a year. That's what it's been the last couple of years. It's just kind of reallocating the number from our our generated like our surplus account that has all of our assets to a different account. So it's just kind of moving some money around on the on the books, so.
Okay, thank you.
No on cash? Entry. Anything else? Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I would have somebody please approve, make a motion to approve the 2022 operating in capital budget.
Mayor Barkley, I will sorry, move the council approves the 2022 operating capital budgets as presented.
Okay, thank you very much, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Bates has another question, sorry.
No, just thinking about it again and looking at it, it's, I support the budget. It's it's not bare bones. It gives us the funds to provide our existing services and undertake stated improvements, which are significant. I think that's just a summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I would just like to add a comment as well. I also support this budget and I think it's a turning point as we move forward as an organization. Certainly, the implementation of the asset management and the energy management programs are a significant investment on the part of the town. But I believe, I believe that they're important. I was really struck at the Muni Me's 101 program last week in talking to some of the smaller rural communities and the lack of awareness and planning around carbon tax as an example. And so seeing seeing that that's put so clearly in front of us and we have a plan around what those dramatic increases are going to look like, as well as some of the dramatic decreases in funding. So I appreciate that work from operations. Thank you very much. I know that we talked about this and I just wanted to just make a last comment on it. I believe there's room for us to negotiate with Fortis and Atco relative to a breakdown on the franchise fees to say this is the amount that are being paid on non-residential is the amount that we're charging on residential. I think as families and homes look at the increasing costs around utilities, I think it's time that they sat down and said, this is the point of the franchise fee, but we're we're penalizing the the utilities companies are penalizing our residents. So I'd like to be able to to put that on the table to say as we move forward, can we please have that conversation? Thank you.
Anything else? CEO Becker?
Sure, thanks.
I'm sure if you had your hand up.
No, I'm anticipating moving into passing the budget. I'm commending you, council, for your for your diligence on those three days and questions after. And of course, today, that but also on to my administrative staff and their teams for for all the hard work once again. And to Director Vickers for for orchestrating all of us and putting us all together. So just commanding all all parties with this budget.
Yeah, for sure. I would concur. And so great presentation, three days, Director Vickers. So thank you for all the work that you and your staff put in and you made it easy for everyone to understand and and make good decisions. And as Councilor Wing said and Bates, I, this is a very ambitious budget. And it's nice to see. And it's nice to see some, I mean, that there's some major spending in there that's going to result in improvement to the, the community and residents' well-being. So thank you so much. So if everyone is, everyone in favor of that motion? All in favor? Okay. All right. Thank you. Carried. And we will move on to seven point two, the subdivision and development appeal clerk appointment with Director Vickers.
Hey there. So I'm just looking to, for council to appoint a subdivision and development appeal, SDAB clerk for the town of Innisville. So as per section six twenty seven of the municipal government act, council must appoint a clerk of a subdivision and development appeal board. And administration is requesting that council point Vanessa Connors, the legislative coordinator, as the SDAB clerk. All training requirements under seven, under section six twenty seven point one dash three have been completed. So I'm just looking for that motion.
Thank you. Could I please have someone make that motion? Councilor Harrison?
Mayor Barkley, I saw a move that council appoint Vanessa Connors as the subdivision and development appeal SDAB clerk for the town of Innisville.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion questions? All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. And next we have eight point one. So we have Karen Bradbury with FCSS that will present some funding recommendations to us. Welcome.
Can I do the happy dance? The budget's good. Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So I'm coming before you today to bring forward the recommendations for the twenty twenty two FCSS funding. So the background is that our, our board met on November seventeenth and December the sixth because we had an application come in after our first meeting. So we, we discussed recommendations for the distribution of FCSS grant funding. As in the previous year, the amount that we have again this year, as long as everything's okay with the provincial allotment is one hundred and thirty four thousand, which is what we designate for external funded agencies. So we generally receive at two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and ninety two dollars from the province of Alberta. The town utilizes funds for internal FCSS programs and operations and distributes the balance to local organizations, furthering the priorities of FCSS. So I've attached a chart aligning as well what the requests have been and what the recommended disbursements are. The recommend, recommendations were put forward at both meetings. The contingent, contingency funding was withheld to allow for the ongoing identification of gaps and trends in services. And we will be real allocated later in twenty twenty two. We actually did that this year as well. We held back, I believe it was twenty thousand dollars, and we did get a request in May, April or May for those extra funds. The FCSS advisory board evaluates each application by using the attached eligibility assessment tool from FCSS. And I believe that was included in your packages as well. The anticipated outcomes is that programs and services continue to be provided, which supports the well-being of children, families, caregivers, older adults, and seniors in Innisville. The level of impact to, to our, our FCSS staff is minimal. It's basically, I just do out the funding agreements, the requisition for the funding throughout the year, and then just continue to monitor those funding levels with those service providers. The FCSS advisory board is recommending following distribution as provided in the chart. The strategic plan alignment, it does align with council priorities in promoting well-being of residents and access to social amenities in Innisville, including opportunities in relation to social well-being, while inclusion and access, connecting to people and supportive environments. So the public will be informed through either a press release and then a letter or email will be provided to each, each applicant that has been accepted for funding. So the recommended motion today is that council approve FCSS twenty twenty two funding recommendations as follows to the Chinooks Edge School Division number seventy three, the Innisville Seniors Drop-In Center, the Innisville Public Library, Standing Stones Counseling, and the Innisville Yes Program, with the remaining recommended funds withheld for FCSS contingent, contingency purposes for a total disbursement amount today of one hundred and twelve, six hundred and eighty seven dollars, one hundred and twelve thousand. It's per the recommendations put forward by the FCSS advisory board.
Thank you, Karen. Could I have? Someone make that motion, please? Councilor Bates?
Sure. I'll, I'll move the recommended action as written right there.
Okay. And are there any questions, discussions? Councilor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a question through to Director. Karen, and it's regarding the, the province's allotment. You said when we don't know until they announce, when do they announce?
Well, they've signed on for three years. So as long as everything is good to go, we'll know, I believe it's January. Like when our January payment comes in, I think we, we will know then based on that if everything's good to go. We don't actually disperse any funds until January.
That was my follow-up question. Thank you. Yeah.
Councilor Bates?
Yes, through to Karen. So the question I have is typically you'll revisit this in the late summer or fall, or if you get a unexpected request.
Yeah, if we get a request and, and then in the summer, generally May and June, I will connect with my funded agencies to see where they're at and how things are going. And then I, I lead the interagency and I also lead community conversations. So sometimes through those conversations, we identify other gaps and trends. And sometimes in a service provider will put in an application based on need. Yeah.
Karen, can you briefly explain the, the Yes Program?
Sure. So the Yes Program is a program that is new to us in twenty twenty one. So we got that application in April. They were slated to start the year prior in our schools, but because of a last minute funding decision through AHS, that funding was canceled. So we did not have it. So because of a change in funding structure, we were impacted by that Chinooks Edge was impacted by that. McMahon got an increase in funding. So it's great. The money is still in our community. But because of that, there was a restructuring of the family school wellness program. And because of that restructuring, it actually changed the positions from family school wellness from being a ten month, from a twelve month position to a ten month contracts. So because of that reduction in funding, it also meant a reduction in services that are provided to the students. So a lot of the extras that family school wellness provided aside from the counseling was those extra programs around, you know, could be group work around mental health. Kids Have Stress Two is a program that we, we actually support through FCSS. Those are all considered extras now. So FCSS, Family School Wellness, so, sorry. Family School Wellness now basically does one-to-one counseling support with children. So none of those extra support groups, none of those extra supports for helping building resiliency and coping skills are being offered through family school wellness. So that is actually what the Yes Program is now in the schools and are able to do. And I'm hearing really great reports so far, and we have a really good working relationship with them to date.
Thanks, Karen. And I, I actually got a message today from, from someone, and she asked that I, I read this to you. So it was from Janice McBride. And she said, last year, my daughter had to teach in Penthol due to numbers after teaching in Innisville for eight years. But the good news is she was offered a kindergarten job here again this year. Last year, she taught with a teacher whose husband taught the Yes Program. Melissa and I both saw the books and teaching resources and thought it was a wonderful program. In June or July, I saw on the news that the town of Innisville purchased this program for the school. First of all, thank you from the bottom of her heart as it wasn't a cheap program and the school could not have budgeted for it. She has had the program in her class since September, and I know it's only kindergarten, but it's already helping our parents struggling, you know, kind of too tired to, to raise their children. And what a positive impact it has had. And she just wants to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for this purchase. It has truly impacted our little ones who need all the help we can give them. So have a Merry Christmas. So I thought that was nice feedback for you.
And to add to that, just one thing, like our kids have stress two program, we were only doing in all grade one classrooms. And now with the addition of, of the Yes Program, we've now expanded to all grade, all grade three classrooms and all grade eight classrooms. So we're able to get that. And that was the goal was to get to some of those other transitional grades when kids are certainly seeing increased levels of stress for sure.
That's awesome. You can, Councilor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Hi, Karen. I only had one year as a volunteer on FCSS last year, but I wanted to applaud the work that you do, but I do have a question for you. This is a very worthwhile group, and I know how connected you are in the community. We have talked about this a little bit in the past. Who, is there any organization in town that are either looking for the homeless or the minimally housed folks? Or are we looking for support from other areas of the county or from Red Deer? And is that a potential area, as you talked about other programs that might pop up? Because it certainly seems to me from what I'm reading in other places to becoming more and more of an issue here.
Well, for FCSS has four key priorities. So that is poverty reduction, housing and homelessness, mental health and domestic violence. So in our community conversation that we have on a monthly basis, those are some of the issues that we have brought forward and that we are looking to see, you know, are there levels of funding that we could apply for? We did look at a level of funding through RDN, I believe it was. But the funding had to be spent by like the end of December. And I think the call for proposal was like November, and it was for to do a housing counter, something like that. So there are lots of funding that we could potentially access. So we can get a real good what's the word I'm looking for, a real good assessment of what that level of need is in the community. Like we know there are individuals in the community that are struggling, that are either homeless or at risk of homelessness. So we do continue as a community conversation to keep those issues at the forefront. And we're looking at ways of how do we get that information to the residents about programs that are available? Right now, I have to say the programs are minimal, like we do refer to the rental supplement program through Red Deer Housing. And right now we have a campaign actually going on called Pass the Tuke. We're just accepting it at Tukes and stuff. And I actually delivered two bags to local facilities this week just for those vulnerable individuals to have some winter gear. So we do try and target that where we can, but it's certainly still on our radar.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. Great presentation. As always, we have a motion on the table. Let me see who's in favor. Carried. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karen. Okay, next we have a request for decision municipal development plan and land use bylaw with Manager Shaw presenting.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So today administration is bringing to you two recommended motions dealing with amending the municipal development plan as well as the land use bylaw. The ABCs of land use amendments, basically it follows three readings of a bylaw, first and second and third. In between that, you have a public hearing. So today what we're asking for is for you to give first reading to a bylaw to amend the municipal development plan as well as the land use bylaw. And then also to establish a public hearing date to receive input on both of those bylaws. So sometimes landowners want to change their land use on their property. And in this particular case, we have a landowner who wants to change it from residential back to commercial. A few years ago, the landowner was here before you to change it from commercial to residential because of a proposed idea that, that they had. Now that they have found out what the cost of that proposal was going to be, they have determined that they want to turn it back to commercial. The majority of the area around here is highway commercial, so it's, it's a suitable type of land use for the property. And administration is recommending that you do give first reading to the bylaw to amend the MDP as well as the land use bylaw. So you have before you the two motions that will begin this process of changing the MDP designation as well as the land use only for the property.
Thank you, Manager Shaw. So everybody understands where this property is, the old busters building up on forty ninth Avenue. So I would ask that somebody could please make a motion for first reading, if you could read out that motion, please?
I'll move first reading to bylaw sixteen seventy seven, twenty twenty one to amend the municipal development plan for the properly legally described as lot eight block A plan eight, one eight eight nine RS and civically described as thirty nine fifty two, forty ninth Avenue from residential to commercial and set January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two at three P M in council chambers for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Bates. Any questions, discussions? All in favor? Thank you. And then I could ask somebody to make the second motion, please, and read it out.
Mayor Barkley, motion, the council gives the first reading to bylaw number one four seven zero dash A seven five being a bylaw to amend land use bylaw for property legally described as lot eight block A plan one eight eight nine RS and civically described as thirty nine fifty two, fortieth avenue from D C D direct control division to highway C highway commercial district. And sets January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two at three P M in council chambers for public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham. Any questions, discussion? Nothing? Okay, all in favor? Great, thank you. Thank you, Manager Shaw. And I think you are up again with eight point three requests for decision on Discovery Wildlife Park.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have before you an application to put in another cabin on the Discovery Park. Because this is a direct control district, this is why it's before council tonight. Typically, it might be the development officer or the municipal planning commission that gives approvals for development within our community. But because this land is owned as direct control, it is you who are the approving authority. So we have a request to place a, a cabin within the facility. It's about two hundred square feet. Powered and does not include the water and sewer. So there are quite a number of cabins out there already. And so administration is before you today asking for approval for this particular development permit application.
Okay, thank you. Could I please have someone make that motion?
Mayor Barkley? I moved it, council approves the development permit two one D dash one three zero for the development of one new accessory building cabin to be located at fifty four hundred forty second Avenue in Innisville, Northwest twenty seven dash thirty five dash twenty four West Four, subject to the conditions listed in the attached draft development permit.
Okay, any questions? Nothing? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Great to see another cabin going out there. Okay, and we'll move on to eight point four, the rail siding right of way. Director Kennedy, I assume, instead of Director Jenkins. Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Barkley. So I'm in front of you. A proposed right of way agreement to supply access to the rail siding currently being constructed in, across the town yards. The town allowed built-in industries to undertake construction works for the rail siding through our industrial or to access their industrial facility following a memorandum of understanding. The proposed right of way agreement will formalize the access needed to operate, maintain the rail siding. This agreement will be registered on the town, on the titles of the two town-owned properties to the siding crossings. The agreement addresses access, operations and maintenance, future access for others, as well as liability. The town is also drafting a lease agreement for land subject to the right of way agreement to, to address the compensation term, decommissioning and other details of the relationship. So we are looking for council recommended. So we are looking for council recommended motion to direct administration to enter into that right of way agreement. With the company six nine three seven three six Alberta Limited. In substantial accordance to the presented draft.
Okay, thank you. Could I please have someone make that motion? Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I move the council direct administration to enter into a right of way agreement. With six nine three seven three six Alberta Limited. In substantial accordance with the presented draft.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. So we'll just go through correspondence. Now. Thank you, Kara. Lots of correspondences this time. Just want to point out the CP holiday train is December eighteenth. That's virtual. And. Just maybe ask if there's going to be communication coming out from the town with respect to to that and how people can sign up. I think there were some posters that came with the correspondence and.
Remember, I could just a few other items. Well, certainly communicate this, this, this event out. There's a few other items on the within the correspondence I wouldn't mind pointing out and should have had a more of an R F D cover for some of these action items. But Karen, if we can move to the placing committee minutes, please. We go down to four point one and four point two, please. So just to, so the committee had a meeting recently. So the committee is new based following the organizational meeting of council. So the committee came before each other to introduce themselves. But a committee talked about having a youth representative and to go back and to seek youth representation. The previous committee prior to the new committee come on a board had a youth representative and the committee felt was quite beneficial. Even though the appointments to the committees, the numbers are already there, this each position is filled. The committee is recommending back to council to to seek a youth representative, more than non voting member at this given time. So looking for council approval of the to the committee through a resolution to that we would go out to our contacts to seek a youth representative. So I'll just stop there if there's any conversation on that, but looking for for a formal resolution from your council. The other piece to the minutes is four point two and it's reflected in your twenty twenty two budget. This where it came from that the initiative for community safety. So the committee recommended to you council to to provide some funding towards a a community safety planning. Project you have to be determined. So will you achieve that within your approved budget? Right then, the next step will be for administration to develop a scope of what that could look like for the committee onto council for for consideration. So just want to highlight those two items.
Thank you. Do you want a a resolution now for the youth members? Could I ask somebody to make that motion, please?
Mayor Barkley, I'm prepared to make that motion. I fully, I was only on the committee brief time. And I think that youth position, it was reflected to us. A couple of times by the previous person that was on there that that we weren't always hitting the mark when it came to reaching the youth. So I think that's very important and I'm prepared to make that motion or make a motion that we. Authorize the committee to have that extra person, non voting, I guess, is the way you've described it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bates. Any discussion? Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a question around process. Would that be a standing committee member or do we have to every year or every couple of years when you change the committee? Vote or have another resolution to appoint the student or or the youth member?
Mayor Barkley, the Counselor Harrison, that's that's a good question. Wait to be determined. So what happens, the terms of reference of the committee indicates to to appoint members and one could be a youth representative. We didn't have any youth applications at the time presenting during during the organizational meeting. So all positions are filled. We didn't really highlight to highlight that to council. But yeah, so certainly we'll take that under advisement. So what do you point now? We'll certainly, you know, look at retaining the youth, but the members usually don't turn out for for two years.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Everyone in favor? Carrie, thank you. Anything else CEO Becker in the minutes that you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, not in the minutes.
Correspondence, I meant, sorry.
Yeah, there's a letter. Where is it? It's from the Community Partners in Action Society.
Yes, I saw it in there too. Just trying to find it here. Doesn't seem to be.
So that's to this group here, Baron Council is a local society. They're looking for a letter of support from the town. Some, they're submitting to a proposal to the civil society funds for a whole of society approach. To respond to socially determinants of health and epidemic of social isolation. It's it's really to address people's social needs is for the letter through community partnerships. What they're doing is proposing to hire a community connector that will be responsible for seeking out and developing resources to connect the individuals to the appropriate resources. Based on self identified interest and need. So typically council, the protocol is for you to make a resolution if you desire to. Just so you have an awareness of where the grants applications are going within our community. So if you see it, see value in supporting the society with this grant application, we'd ask for you to consider a motion in letter of support.
I asked somebody to make that motion if you're interested.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? In Isville Community Partners in Action Society, do they have any relationship with any of our other organizations, FCSS? Like, are they known to us? Yes, is asking for operating dollars for a position? Something that we that we need? Is that a gap in the community now?
Sure. So the Community Partners in Action has been in place for probably a couple of years now. It was a group of people. I was actually one of them as a volunteer. Who initiated the dementia friendly community initiative. So it's made up of Wendy Evans, of course, who's the geriatric assessment nurse of the primary care network. Ellen Helgason, who's the Alberta Health Services rec therapist. Jennifer Wood, who is the was the dementia friendly coordinator. She's now in home care. She's a registered nurse. Karen Bradbury is part of that group along with Rebecca Aspen, who's the practice facilitator at the P C N. And so they they formalized the the Community Partners in Action as a society as opposed to. Getting applying for grants and going through Alberta Health Services just because of the kind of the bureaucratic. Find the right word. Tangle that tangle that happened, shall we say? It's just, it's just easier for them this way and and. So the society is actually newer, but the people have been around a lot. So they they also work very closely with Karen, not very closely with Wendy or Sandy Whacker with the H friendly committee. And I think what's happening, what we've seen over the last year or so, this they've expanded the program so much. Ellen has been running the connect in Isville connects. She now has like seventy eighty people participating in that program along with dementia education, etc. So. So I think they've just decided to try to formalize their group a little bit better where it's easier for them to apply for funding. And and then they can put it where they need to put it as opposed to sometimes within Alberta Health Services. And it gets placed in in other places that maybe aren't doing as much benefit.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Then I would be pleased to make that motion to prepare a letter of recommendation from the town of Minisville.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All in favor? Thank you. Anything else CEO Becker in there? Okay. Okay, if there's nothing further, I'll have someone make a motion, please, so we accept the correspondence as information.
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we will now go to our council reports and since Counselor Highstead's not here today, we'll start with Counselor Harrison.
Excuse me. Thank you very much, Mayor Barkley. I I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the wrap up party of Festival of Trees. And that's been the first time that I've seen Joyce School of Dance perform. And I'll tell you, I was, I couldn't believe the performance of those young ladies. It was beyond words. So to the team that put that event together and that short period of time. I'd like to thank you very much. And I think the community would like to thank you. That was well put together, well organized. And. I didn't get the tree that I wanted, but I my wife got the one that she wanted, so everything's fine. So to the team, thank you. Thank you very much. I did also drive through the security charity check stop. On the weekend and very professional. I fill my candy cane and give my donation and off we went. I see yesterday I was out and there's a number of locals using our local outdoor rinks. The one over, I don't know what it's called. They're the one with the boards over on whatever street that is. So they're being used, they're being swept. So thank you to the op staff for for getting out and flooding those rings. Also yesterday, there was two or three parties on the lake ice fishing. So that's good to see. I didn't have an opportunity to talk to them to see if they were catching fish. But their tent was in the same spot as where the big fish were last year. So maybe, maybe, maybe they will catch. Also, I, two days last week, I spent in Three Hills. Munis one oh one, a great presentation by municipal affairs and the the legal community. I certainly learned a lot, reviewed a lot. It was a very good presentation. I think we could have probably used another couple of days when at times it seemed to be a little rushed. So but gives us a good start and they did leave names and numbers that we could, if you do have any questions. We could certainly get back to them. So it was, it was good. I. And I think that's all I had, Mayor Barkley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you got, or I'm glad Colleen got the tree. Counselor Maseras.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I attended the municipal planning commission committee meeting last week and we approved two applications for permits. And. I went to Muni one oh one last week, a lot of information. And I just would like to say about that and in relation to everything else that administration does. Thank you for all that you do to prepare us for this position. And for the prompt manner in which you respond to our questions and our directions. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Dunham.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Last Monday, we had our agenda priorities meeting. I felt it was a really good meeting and definitely a highlight for me was Donna Allard's rural economic development presentation. It really aligns with, I think, what we're trying to do in this community. On Wednesday, December eighth, I attended the bullying awareness and prevention committee meeting, although not in official council capacity. It's a committee that's immensely important to me. And I'm happy to report that we're close to finalizing our vision, vision, mission and values, as well as we have our first partnership with FCSS. And we're nearing an agreement with Dare to Care out of Calgary to help us with a K to six program. And we'll be working towards programs we can take to the community to help businesses, organizations and spark groups address this important issue in Isville. On December ninth and tenth, I as well attended with council and administration for Muni one oh one. And. Boy, it was a lot of information. I found a lot of it very interesting and enlightening, definitely much broader understanding in view of what our jobs and responsibilities are and are not as well. So that was something that I really took away is is really understanding what we have the capacity to do. So and over the weekend, I was part of the Inisville first Festival of Trees wrap up and it was incredible. I'm really proud to be part of it and looking over the last three weeks of the festival and the tremendous community spirit that Inisville showed for it. And I'm excited to see what happens next year.
Thank you, Counselor Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I don't have a lot extra. I would like to just reinforce a couple of comments. I was very grateful to have the opportunity last Monday at Agenda and Priorities to celebrate Donna Allard's career with the provincial government. Donna has been a force for a long time and she will be around. So I would like to see us keep in contact with her relative to our economic development work. I also attended the municipal planning commission last week. That's a body of work that becomes more and more interesting every time we meet and went to Three Hills as well for Munis one oh one. Certainly, I would echo the comments relative to the support we have from administration. The very professional work that we do, the group that we participated with was comprised of much smaller communities and councils. So I think in the future, it would be, it would be interesting to be able to participate with a group of larger communities just to sort of. See that difference in perspective. The facilitators were very good and they certainly provide potential resources for us. Like to celebrate again the twenty fifth annual charity check stop and the first annuals Festival of Trees. Both events certainly need to be celebrated and recognized in Inisville. And there are other opportunities that are coming up still to provide support to folks and families in our community this Christmas from seniors. To teenagers to children. So there are places in town to keep your eyes open. And then just finally, there's much going on with the Chamber of Commerce. We've begun strategic planning. So last week we I participated in a strategic plan review of their existing strategic plan in preparation for tomorrow, the fourteenth. We'll be doing a fairly large strategic planning session that's going to be facilitated by the Alberta Chambers of Commerce. So I'm looking forward to that and as well the chambers monthly meeting and their Christmas lunches coming up this Thursday. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Wing. Counselor Bates.
So I also, excuse me, was involved in the MPC meeting. After that, I, the next day, a Zoom budget meeting with the Mountain View Water Commission. And they did pass the reduced rate of water that I'd previously advised with their second and third readings. Incidentally, that starts April of twenty twenty second. They completed a new P L C update without any supply disruption. And some of us asked, oh, we didn't know you were doing that. And they said normally, if they're doing something that they're very sure won't, they don't even advise because we have water reservoirs full, etc. So. Thursday, Friday, the Muni one oh one in Three Hills was was again very good. I don't think you're going to see that again until four years from now. And but I think that is a good point of trying to pick one where you're at with bigger centers. I didn't buy a tree. I did participate in the charity check stop and. The Joy School of Dance, the lion is my granddaughter. So I did watch that. And I'll get to watch it and it's that's an abbreviated effort. What you saw is half of what they do. And I'll be going to Olds on Tuesday to watch that. It still appears if the two countries of Singapore and Canada can keep their COVID regulations intact, that I will miss my first meetings in four years, next Monday and Tuesday. So. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bates. I as well attended the Muni's one oh one on Thursday. On Friday, I had the South Red Deer Regional Wastewater Commission meeting for the first time. So I'm now learning lots about our wastewater system. So it was actually really interesting. And. The they spoke quite a bit about Red Deer County Gasoline Alley as well as Old and all the work they've done on mitigating infiltration into the system. And even though Red Deer County Gasoline Alley is built out so much, it seems like their volumes are decreasing. I guess just maybe because it's such a modern system, but you know, they they spoke about the this last summer and how dry it was. And takes. So much longer for waste to go through the system when there's not as much flow. And that increases the cost from having to use chemi- Waste to go through the system when there's not as much flow and that increases the cost from having to use chemicals because of the increase in gases that. That that happens. But I think going forward, we're we're going to see some more come out of this. We're doing a strategic planning session. Next year, also Director Kennedy spoke, they spoke a little bit about the. The pond for for Innisville, and it looks like that may not get done till maybe in the fall sometime, just maybe trying to. Skirt some of the additional costs we might see in early spring or summer. But I know that's in good hands with you. I also got a tree on Saturday. It was the town council tree I ended up buying. You're welcome. Because I couldn't get the tree I wanted. But it looks very nice. It was delivered yesterday and it's looking lovely. So I I think December has been a really fun time in the community with with everything that's gone on. And thank you. Councilor Dunham for initiating the Festival of Trees. We also have had the hometown Christmas, of course, and. The event the the town put on with the lighting, the tree and as Councilor Wing said, you know, there's lots of need in this community. It was great to see. I understand the Christmas Bureau boxes in the town office were filled today. They were empty this morning and overflowing this afternoon and. And Bill and Hopkins came to pick it up and emptied out. I understand the food bank is doing very well with donations and I. I as well participated in the charity check stop on Saturday, and it was such a nice day. So I hope that they did very well too, which I'm I'm sure they did. So. Coming up this week. Guess we have a some meetings coming up this week that we can talk about another time, but. Anything else? Okay, all right. So we'll now have. Counselor. Or CEO Becker, you're not a counselor.
Mayor Barkley, my council, we had a little some glitches with our system.
Okay.
So the events portion of the agenda did not make your agenda, but we'll certainly circulate that out to you once we locate it and we'll get it out to you. So.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much. Okay, we now have open mic session. Does anybody want to say anything? Andrew, do you want to come up to the the desk here and turn the microphone? Said, if you just want to sit down and turn the microphone on, thank you.
Just me.
And state your name, please. Can you just turn your mic on, please? That's okay. People on Zoom can hear you.
Is that on?
Yes.
Okay. I remove my I remove, I have removed my hat in deference to the group, the August group here now, the. Under the understanding that I may be causing some eye strain, though I realize I'm not the only one similarly afflicted. I have three points to make to add to the presentation made before. And so I'm just gonna, without delay, jump into these. It is important to realize that those who are, I'm just adding this to the presentation that was made before. To remember that those who are vaccine reticent are not by law criminal or prior or prias in this society. The reason you, as a counselor, are being asked to intervene are fourfold, and I'll list them out here. You collectively are responsibly responsible to uphold. The complete and entire law of the land. Two, you collectively are here to represent all the people of your electorate. Three, you collectively do have a legal and binding way forward by invoking our MLA Health Minister Solicitor General and Premier to use the reference procedure. To test judicially if the present COVID measures are constitutional. Finally, you collectively as elected officials are responsible to do your part to keep this country, province, county, and town strong and free. This will require stepping out. This is my third point. This will require stepping out of your comfort zones, doing research and petitioning the layers of government to keep our. Area of Canada free and democratic society. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Anyone else want to? Actually, yeah, we don't do questions. It's just an open mic session. So anyone else want to step forward and say anything? Please come forward and.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lynn Hambley. I realize this is about the third time that you've had people come and and talk to you about their. Frustrations and worries of what's happening in Canada right now. We have always believed that our first. Connection or our first line to government is our local government. And that is why I think that you feel you see people coming and expressing their feelings as to what's going on. I totally understand. That legally. You probably feel that this is. Not where you want to be. And I understand that asking you to take this on as a legal battle is. Not where you want to go. I'm not even suggesting that. But. I'd like your acknowledgement. That there are a lot of people deeply hurting. And looking. For their level of government to at least acknowledge. Their hurt. And I think that it would go a long ways to healing our community. If just as. Our local government, you were willing. Simply to write a letter stating that you have many people in your jurisdiction. That are so affected and so hurting by this. Would you be willing to at least do that?
We could take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to speak?
My name is Cindy Dunbar. I'm here. Again, I've been here several times. I am concerned. I want to put another face to this. My mom has been here in town for seven years. She's COVID recovered and it is not recommended that she get the shot from her doctor. She's seventy nine years old. She walks to stay active every winter since she's been here. She accesses the pool to for physical health to stay healthy through the winter. I talked with her last night. She hasn't been out of the house since the snow came because it's unsafe for her to go out walking. So how? I just looked on the Innisville Aquatic Center rules. So depending on what. Is going on at the pool. So taught swim, parents can go in without without proof of vaccination. If your child is under eight, you can watch them without vaccination. But if they're nine or over, you do. The parent needs to provide proof of vaccination. Water polo parents cannot come in without proof of vaccination. So some people are allowed in with proof of that without proof of vaccination. Some need to provide it. For somebody like my mom, who this will be detrimental, like. I guess she can get a stationary bike, maybe, but this is something that she's done ever since she was here, and it's really going to affect her this year. She's on pension. I'm coming here. Because she's very concerned. So. It just. It affects me personally. I I wonder, like, can there maybe be a section that says also? There's a group of people who don't need to provide proof of vaccination. In order to stay healthy, I'm concerned what what a full winter is going to do for her not to remain active. So. I also want to follow up. I presented earlier in October because I was concerned for the skating club. There are lots of families who are very concerned that the rep program was going to affect skating. Now, I realize that. I would like it fully open. I do want to say thank you to whoever's responsible can skate, pre can and all star skate program has been. Able to run this whole fall up until now. Without being affected by the by the R E P program, and I appreciate that. And I I look forward to that continuing as well. So. Those are my couple of points. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to step forward?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, my name is Katie Hillman. I'm a resident of the Red Deer County. I. I workshop, bank, utilize all the facilities in the town of Innisville. I have all my life. The question that the delegation brought forward to just ask for help. To ask questions to the provincial government is what we're asking. I I heard. You say in other meetings that you do not want to act unlawful. And we agree. We don't. No one here wants to act unlawful. Section ninety two under the Constitution Act, yes, it of eighteen sixty seven, yes, it does exist. But friends, the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, it's still new. It's younger than me. It came into existence in nineteen eighty two. And in all honesty. People are still learning the importance of it and what it means. And it's true. We have to teach generations. About the cost, the Charter of Rights and Freedom. And unlike our neighbors to the south of us, who they've had their charter of their independence. Many, many years longer than us. So. My question is. When a government acts unlawful. Who corrects the government? You and I, we have, we hold more power than we're giving ourselves credit to. And we just asked that you would give this great, great consideration. In Mr. Becker's letter, he had said, made mention that your municipalities are meeting weekly with the medical chief officer. Could it not be asked for a cost based analysis, something like material that we can look at? That's what we've asked for. And I know you guys have said to go to the provincial level. We have, we've been trying. And there's no response. We're not getting response. So. We asked that you would really give us consideration. And I want to wish you guys a very Merry Christmas. And I hope that you will give us consideration over your Christmas holidays, too. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Anyone else would like to step forward? Okay. Then we don't have upcoming events, so we will have a motion then to move in camera, please.
Remember, I would move that we go in camera.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wing. All in favor? Thank you.